अविमानना देवड़ो महोन्नतड़ो आच्छेरे करड़ो, आलोषणकर्तो बलवंतुड़े न देवड़ो नित्यड़गु तन्रे नित्यनिवासना देवड़ो तन्ने नि पादालिकु नरमु स्वत्रम् चलिस्तुनान आकाशम् नि मयमुन कनपच्चुवाड़ा भूमिन्ततः नि नामेन्तो प्रभावु कलदी आकाश नि भूमि नि समस्तम् नु कलगजेसिनाह इथे भूलोकल्ला मनिष्णि ज्ञापुकन् जश्कु उड़े पाटिवाड़ु नरपुतुं दर्शिंचक वड़े पाटु वैनि चलिविचि देवा मानमुनि कोरकु नाकोरकु माकोरकु यि लोकानिग दंदि इतिगो लोकपापम् मुस्कुंसुन देवुनि कोरपिलगा नाकोरकु माकोरकु विचिन्ति प्राणनि सिलवल अर्पिंचुड़ु द्वार माकु विर्दले मोचिनि चिन्नो शेष्टमेन संग सावासम्लो 2024 समस्तम् नु कुड़म्मुल प्रेषिवेद्यो गतिदिनमुलो मासुमुलो नेललो घण्टलो निमिष्यमुलो कंचेसिका पार्तुन ना पिया परलोक तन्रे नि पादालिकु नरमुलो उदयकालन्ने निदासुन्ने चंद्रकांतुगानि मामध्यु नडिपिंचि शेष्टमेन माटि एवान स्वाक्ता तन्दि पदाहिदव देमु येम्मिदव वच्चम्लो मिर बहुगापल्चिनेला नातन्ने मयमुपुन्ताने वाद्धानविचि शेष्टमेन माटल माकन्दिचिनाह निजमेतन्दि वेदुकुड़े अनि चलिविचिन्न लेखनालपटि प्रवा निलछुण्डिरै चलिविचिनाह देवा परिपूर्णंतो नि नम्बरिंसन चलिविस्तो विचिनाह निजमेतन्दि वेदकालनाह ओ प्रवम् मोदठानि राज्यमु नीतिने तकालन चलिविचिन्न लेखनालपटि वन्नरमुलो एशेपु मामध्यु तिस्कुचिनाह देवा आत्मिंग संदेशल निदासुन्दार माकु लेखनाल तेलजेपने विधानंबटि वन्नरमुलो उदयकालम पत्ते कुडिकल तोडुगाउन्नाह ई रात्तिकालक समील्ल कुड़ा निदासुन्ने लबड़े दासुन्या एढंद्रात्पुण्डि निम्पनि पाटल वाकिन्सुपिंचन्दि रावल्य बिडलक शमंगन नडिपिंचन्दि मन्नर चुटु नि मयमुनुसन्दि नि देवदासु सामीलन्ना गुड़तन्दि चिलकुरु तन्दि ऊर्गेलुटिनगानि दासुन्य कुड़ा कड़नु बलपच्चे वाडुकुण्न मिस्तिस्तुनाह मामध्यु गुड़े जम्मानिगाउन्न अनि वायद्यलु पाटल वाक्यमु नु अकुने मयमुपुन्तुरम्मु नि सन्निदु कोरकुंटु माप्रवमा विक्षेकुडु प्रवनेश्वर कृष्ण गनमय नाउन सुदिंचि प्रादिंचे अडिवेचुनान तन्रे अमी पिदा बाटु बख्सिन्न विचि 5 वंदला 25 वाटु वाटु नाह मेरु बहुगापलिंचिनच्छो महिमा कलगुन तन्रे की
मेरु बहुगाह पालिंचिनच्छो महिमा कलु बुनु तन्रे की ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु नीरु कर्तिना तोटावले नीटि उटावले नुंदे दारु नीरु कर्तिना तोटावले नीटि उटावले नुंदे दारु शामामुलो त्रुत्तिनिचि शेमामोगाहिम्मो नडिपिंचुडो शामामुलो त्रुत्तिनिचि शेमामोगाहिम्मो नडिपिंचुडो बलपरचुडो मी अमु कलनो बलपरचुडो मी अमु कलनो अधिकमुगा पालिंचुडी अधिकमुगा पालिंचुडी मेरु पबुगा पालिंचिनच्छो महिमा करुगुन तन्रे की ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु चेट्लुले नी मेट्ठाललो नदुला प्रविंपाजयु प्रभु चेट्लुले नी मेट्ठाललो नदुला प्रविंपाजयु प्रभु एन्दी उन्ना नेला नेल्ला नीटि बुक्कलोग जयु वाडो एन्दी उन्ना नेला नेल्ला नीटि बुक्कलोग जयु वाडो मना प्रभु ऐना एहसो नंदो मना प्रभु ऐना एहसो नंदो अधिकमुगा पालिंचुडी अधिकमुगा पालिंचुडी मेरु बहुगा पालिंचिनच्छो महिमा कलु बुनु तन्रे की ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु वडिका प्रवहिंचु नदिवा फोली विस्तारिंपाजयु तन शांतिनी वडिका प्रवहिंचु नदिनी फोली विस्तारिंपाजयु तन शांतिनी अयश्वर्यमुतो निंपु निंम्मो मुदिमी वरकुमिम्मो मोयु वाडो अयश्वर्यमुतो निंपु निंम्मो मुदिमी वरकुमिम्मो मोयु वाडो मना प्रभु ऐना एहसो नंदो मना प्रभु ऐना एहसो नंदो अधिकमुगा पालिंचुडी अधिकमुगा पालिंचुडी मेरु बहुगा पालिंचिनच्छो महिमा कलु बुनु तन्रे की ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु पाडेदारु मुगावारु गंतुलु वेस्दरु कुंटीवारु पाडेदारु मुगावारु गंतुलु वेस्दरु कुंटीवारु ओगडेदारु प्रजलेल्लारु प्रभु नि आश्चर्य कार्यमुलानो ओगडेदारु प्रजलेल्लारु प्रभु नि आश्चर्य कार्यमुलानो महिमा गणता चेलिंचुचु महिमा गणता चेलिंचुचु हल्लेलोया पाडेदारु हल्लेलोया पाडेदारु मेरु बहुगा पालिंचिनच्छो महिमा कलु बुनु तन्रे की ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु ई रीति गा पालिंचिनच्छो शिष्युलय उन्दे दारु
पाटसंक्या 6 वंदला 4 वयकुटि कोत्तपुस्तकम्लो पातदानलो 6 वंदला 28 मिलि कोत्तपुस्तकम्लो 6 वंदला 4 वयकुटि पातपुस्तकम्लो 6 वंदला 28 मिलि मधुत्सरनमु नालवचरनम् पाटुमु
एहसु कृष्टु ने मंचि शिष्युलमुगा विश्वासमुतो सागेदमु एहसु कृष्टु ने मंचि शिष्युलमुगा विश्वासमुतो सागेदमु मनमंदयमुनु आयनासेवनु एकमै साधाजेसेदमु मन एहसु प्रभु शिक्रमुगा वच्चुनु अति वेगमुगा सेवचेतुमु एहसु कृष्टु ने मंचि शिष्युलमुगा विश्वासमुतो सागेदमु एहसु कृष्टु ने मंचि शिष्युलमुगा विश्वासमुतो सागेदमु प्राणात्मा देवमोलु प्रभु सेवके इक जीविंचुटा तन कोरके प्राणात्मा देवमोलु प्रभु सेवके इक जीविंचुटा तन कोरके अनि निष्चयिंचुचु अंदु निलचीयुण्डि प्रभु तिनमंदु हार्षिंतमु मन एहसु प्रभु शिक्रमुगा वच्चुनु अति वेगमुगा सेवचेतुमु एहसु कृष्टु ने मंचि शिष्युलमुगा विश्वासमुतो सागेदमु एहसु कृष्टु ने मंचि शिष्युलमुगा विश्वासमुतो सागेदमु
लेसिन्नावड़ि बैवु पाडवड़ु नाह लैनलो पोस्टलो नान्दि ग्रंदवादनामुलन्नि नावी प्रातियाद्यामु वरसवचनमु तानदेवे प्रेमवादनाम्बुलो ग्रंदवादनामुलन्नि नावी Every promise in the book is mine Every chapter, every loss, every loss All the business is done by you, Deva Every promise in the book is mine लेसिस्कुचन्दि
प्रेस लॉर्ड देवनिक्स्तोत्रम्लो वैरी ग्लैड तू सी यू अगेन दिस इवनिंग ई सायंकालमुना मर्योक्सर्मु चोड़न वेतो संतोषिकरम लेट्स इन द मॉर्निंग वी डिसकस्ट अबाउट फ्यू थिंग्स अबाउट द डिसाइपलशिप उदयकालम्लो शिष्यतम् गुरिंचि कोण्य संगतुल मन तेलस्कुनाह आणि इन होलिस्टिकली व्हाट आर द थ्री थिंग्स व्हिच इस वैरी इंपॉर्टेन्ट द डिसाइपलशिप लाइफ इस अलसो वी मेडिटेट व्हाट हस तू बी कंसिस्टेंटली इन द डिसाइपल्स लाइफ ओका विश्वासी ओका शिष्युनक जीवितम्लो मोत्तानिक चूस्कुनाट्लाइते एमएमी आविक्तिलो उन्डाले एल्लपुड़ उन्नल्सनटु विषालेंटि वैन इथे मन चूस्कुनाह सो वी डिसकस्ट अबाउट थ्री थिंग्स व्हिच इस सीकिंग अबाइडिंग एंड फुल्फिलिंग मनम् मोड़ विषालो तेलस्कुनाह वेदुकुटा निलिच्युडुटा मर्यो निर्वेचुटा आणि मेनी ऑफ देम मोस्ट ऑफ द कृष्टियन्स हैव द हैबिट ऑफ सीकिंग इन्तो मंदे क्रैस्तोवलकु वेदुके टुंडे ओका अलवाट उन्तुंदि आणि फ्यू विल हैव द कैरेक्टरस्टिक्स ऑफ अबाइडिंग इथे कोणदरिक मात्रमे निलिच्युडेटु वंटे गुनालगुनालग्छनाल उटाई आणि अगेन इफ यू सी द थर्ड प्रोसेस वैरी फ्यू विल हैव द फुल्फिलिंग एस्पेक्ट इथे मोड़ अवधिगा अदि निर्वेचेदियाने दे इन्तो कोत्तीमंदलो मात्रमे उन्तुंदि सो सीकिंग इन कॉमन मोस्ट ऑफ द कृष्टियन्स डू वेदुके वेदुकड़ा मन दे इन्तो मंदे क्रैस्तोवलगा साधारणंग चेस्तु उन्तारु आणि अबाइडिंग इस फ्यू ऑफ द कृष्टियन्स विल डू मर्यो निलिच्युडुटा ने दे कोणदरु क्रैस्तोवलो चेस्तु उन्तारु बट फुल्फिलिंग वैरी 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 फ्यू कृष्टियन्स गेट इनटू विथ निर्वेचुटा ने दे इन्तो कोत्तीमंदे क्रैस्तोवलो मात्रमे चेस्तारु बट आस वी रीड इन जॉन चैप्टर 15 वर्स 8 योहानसुवार्ता पदाहिदव देमु येम्मिदव वच्चम्लो मन चादुनाट्लगा बट बाय दिस माय फादर इस ग्लोरिफाइड देट यू में बैर मच फ्रूट सो यू विल बी माय डिसाइपल हियर बैरिंग मच फ्रूट कैन बी फुल्फिल्ड ओन्ली व्हेन द थर्ड फुल्फिलमेंट गोस ट्रू इन योर लाइफ इकड़ा मेरु बहुगापलिंच्चुड़न नातन्रे मयमुपर्चपुड़न बहुगापलिंच्चुटा ने दे पुड़ौस्तुनंते ई मोड़ अवशरतो निर्वेचुटा ने दे जरिनपुड़ बहुगापलिंच्चु वस्तुंदि सो व्हेन देयर इस शुड बी अ ट्रांसिशन फ्रॉम द सीकिंग तू अबाइडिंग एंड अबाइडिंग तू फुल्फिलिंग देयर इस वैन इंपॉर्टेंट रोल ऑफ वैन कैरेक्टरस्टिक्स व्हिच इस वैरी इंपॉर्टेन्ट डेट्स व्हाट यू आर गोइंट तू मेडिटेट तुडे मर्यो वेदुकुटा ने दान नुंडि निलिच्युडटलोनिकी निलिच्युडटाने दान उन्डि निर्वेचुटा ने दानलोनिक वेलतुनापुड़ ओका प्रामुख्यमैनटु वंटे विषम संगति मनक अवसरमु दान गुरिंचि मन विरोध ध्यानम चेदाम व्हाट इस फुल्फिलिंग निर्वेचुटा ने दे एमच अंते दान अर्थमेंटि सीकिंग अंडरस्टैंडिंग द गॉड एंड अबाइडिंग इस लर्निंग इस वर्ड एंड बीइंग इन लव बट फुल्फिलिंग इस पुटिंग ऑल देट इन एक्शन सो देट हिस कमांडमेंट एंड कमिशन इस फुल्फिल्ड वेदुकुटा ने दे देवुनी अर्थम जस्कोड़मु तरवता निलिच्युडुटा अंते अंते आयन प्रेमलो उन्डड़म आयन वाक्यमलो उन्डड़मु ई रेंडु कलिपी मनमु निर्वेचड़मे आ रेंडु मन जीवितम्लो निर्वेचपट्टमे ई निर्वेचुपु आणि देट कैन बी कोरिलेटेड तू अवर्स व्हिच इस वैरी इंपॉर्टेन्ट एंड देट कैरेक्टर्स प्लेस अन मेजर रोल दानिकी सम्बंधिष्णोटो ओका वाक्यमो मनम् चूस्कोवच्चु अदि दानले इन्तो प्रामुख्यमैना पात्रपोषिस्तुंदि आणि लेट्स रीड जेम्स चैप्टर 2 वर्स 26 अल्टीगेदर याकोपुपत्रिका रेंडो देमु 26 वच्चनमु अंदरंकलसे चादुदाम याकोपुपत्रिका रेंडो देमु 26 वच्चनम प्राणमुलेने शरीरमेलाग मुर्तमु अलागे क्रियलुलेने विश्वासमुनु मुर्तमु वर्क इस डेड अलसो सो तुडे इवनिंग वी आर गोइंट तू कांसंट्रेट ऑन दिस फायत विथाउट वर्क इस डेड ई रात्रि कालसमयमुलो क्रियलुलेने विश्वासमु मुर्तमु ने दान गुरिंचि मनम् ध्यानम चेदाम आणि दिस फायत इस वैरी वैरी इंपॉर्टेन्ट व्हिच अक्षुली मेक्स अन ट्रांसिशन फ्रॉम सीकिंग अबाइडिंग तू फुल्फिलिंग योका विश्वासमणे दे इन्तो प्रामुख्यमु इन्तो प्रामुख्यमैन दंते आ वेदुकुटा तरवता निलिच्युडुटा ने दान नुंडि मनल्नि निर्वेचुटा लोनिकी तिस्कुन वेलतुंदि बिकॉज़ आई अंडरस्टैंड हु गॉड इस व्हाट ही इस एक्सपेक्टिंग व्हाट गॉड आस डन तू मी बट इफ आई डोंट शो विथ इन द वर्क्स इफ आई डोंट शो विथ इन द डीट्स इट इस डेड देवुड़ एवरो तेलस्कुने देवु नाकोरके एन जेसल अवनी गुड़ तेलस्कुना तरवता आ तेलिबड़ी नटुंडे दानितो मनम् क्रिया रूपम् प्रिक्रिया रूपम्मु दान चुपिंचकपोते मनाइका विश्वासम मुर्तमैन दे सो इन डिसाइपल्स लाइफ देयर आर मेनी 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 कृष्टियन कैरेक्टरस्टिक्स बट वैन ऑफ द मोस्ट इंपॉर्टेन्ट कैरेक्टरस्टिक्स इस दिस फायत वेयर द वर्क हस तू बी डेमोंस्ट्रेटेड एंड हस तू बी इंप्लीमेंटेड सो देट द फायत लुक्स नॉट डेड ओका क्रैस्तोवक जीवितम्लो विश्वासमु एन्नो गोप्पा लक्षणाल उन्ताई इथे ओका लक्षणमैन टंते विश्वासमुतो कुड़े नटुंडी क्रियलु कनपड़ाली आ क्रियलु कनपड़कपोते विश्वासम मुर्तमैन देगा कनपड़तुंदि सो लेट्स अगेन रीड अगेन जेम्स चैप्टर 2 वर्स 26 टुगेदर याकोपुपत्रिका रेंडो देमीरो यार वच्चनमु मनमंदरंकलसे मल्ली बिगरगात चादुदाम प्राणमुलेने शरीरमेलाग मुर्तमु अलागे क्रियलुलेने विश्वासमुनु मुर्तमु लेट्स लुक इन तू द प्रेयर फॉर हेल्प देवुन वायपुचुदाम प्रार्थनलो मा प्रियमिन परलोकुम तन्रे जियमगलो गोप्पा देवा तनमैन नि नामुनु कुणमुलस्तोत्रम् चलिस्तुनाह इदिनमुना इदिनमंतम मेरु काचिका पाड़े पद्रपर्चि सायंकालसमयमुलो प्रतेककुडिक कोरके ममलंदर नि नियकसन्निदिक समकोचनंदि कुणमुल चलिस्तुनाह नि दासुन्ने निलबट्कुनि मेरनु ग्रेंचिनटुंडि चलोबड़ीनटुंडि अकलेखन बागमु दीविंचन्दि आश्वर्यदिंचन्दि माकोरके विरच्च वटिंचन्दि मे वाक्यमुनु तिनि त्रुत्तिपुण्डि दान प्रकारमु जीविंचिलुटकु विन्यच्चेवलि ग्रहिंचे मनसु लोबड़ि हृदयमुनु माकन्दरिकी दयचेमनि प्रादिस्तुनाह माइका हृदयपु अवसरत कलदी अक्कर कलदी परलोकमुनुंडि नि माटल नि दासुन्द्वारा दयचेसि ममलो हेचरिंचन्दि अदरिंचन्दि दयरपर्चन्दि मुंदुनटुंडि माइका यात्रा दिनमुलालो दिनमुल कोरके नि वाक्यम्द्वारा ममलो बलपर्चुमनि प्रादिस्तुनाह नि दासुने बलपर्चि नि आत्मचेतन निम्पि प्रवा माकोरके मेरु परलोकुमुनु वर्तमानम दयचेन कलोर सिल्वेड़टा सिल्व चाटुन नि दासुनु मर्गुपर्चुकनि बलमैन टुंडे माटल दयचेस्तुरमनि प्रादिस्तुनाह तरझमाल एगुन नानु ग्नापकुम चेस्कुनि नि ओका ग्नानमुनु दयचेसि सरिंटुंडि पदमुलो सरिना सरलतनु अनुग्रहिंचि मेरे मयमुपुन्तुरम्मु नि प्रादिस्तुनाह माइका गमनमुलो माइका चेवुलो निवायपु केंद्रिकरिंचुकुण्टु माइका मनसु नि स्वरम् विन्यटलो मेम केंद्रिकरिंचुकुनाट्लगा सहायम चेमनि प्रादिस्तुनाह प्रतिदिस्तमेंशन इस तपिंसन्दि इन्तो मंचि समयमु दीवन करमैन असमय आश्वर्यवाद करमैन समयमुनु माकु दयचेमनि हृदयमुलनु जीवितम्लो मनश्यलनु मनस्यलनु मारपुच्चु मारपुलोनिक तिस्कुन रमनि प्रार्थना चेस्तु नीके महिमगणत प्रभावमु चेलिंचुकुण्टि एहसु कृष्टुनाह मुलो स्तुतिंचि प्रादिस्तुनाह तन्रे अमी ओके हैप्पी देट मोस्ट ऑफ यू स्टार्ट राइटिंग द नोट्स मिलो इन्तो मंदे रास्कोड़म् प्रारमिंचनारनि चाला संतोषिंग आउंदि ओके सो व्हाट इस द टॉपिक फॉर तुडे इस इवनिंग इरो सायंत्रमु अमशमेंटि फायत विथाउट वर्क्स इस डेड क्रियलुलेने विश्वासमु मुर्तमु ओके सो जेम्स चैप्टर 2 वर्स 26 तू अंडरस्टैंड देट लेट्स रीड इट अल्टरनेटिवली फ्रॉम जेम्स चैप्टर 2 वर्स 14 तू 26 योका याकोपुपत्रिका रेंडो देम 26 वच्चनमु नार्थंजेस्कोलंते ई अध्यायम्लो 14 नुंडि 26 वर्कु मनम् मार्च मार्च चादुदाम यस तू सेव टाइम विल रीड ओन्ली इन तेलुब मार्च मार्च चादुदाम ना सहोदरलारा क्रियलुलेनपुड़ एवड़ेनु तनकु विश्वासम कलदानि चेप्नेडला एमी प्रयोजनमु अट्ट विश्वासम अतनि रक्षिंप कलदा मिलो एवड़ेनु शरीरमुनु कावल्सन वाटिनि योका समाधानमुगा वेलुड़ि चलिकाचुकुणुड़ि त्रुत्तिपुण्डुड़नि चेप्नेडला एमी प्रयोजनमु इथे ओकड़ो नीकु विश्वासमुन्नदि नाकु क्रियलुनवि क्रियलुलेकुण्ननि विश्वासमु नाकु कनपर्चुमु नेनु नाक्रियलचेतन नाविश्वासमुनिक कनपर्तुननि चेप्पुनो 26 वच्चन वेतुड़ा क्रियलुलेने विश्वासम निश्वलमैन दनि तेलस्कुना कोर्चुनावा विश्वासमु अतनि क्रियलुतो कुड़ि कार्यसिद्ध कलगचेसननयु क्रियलमूलमुगा अतन विश्वासमु परिपूर्णमैन दनयु ग्रहिंच्चुनाह गदा मनुष्य विश्वासमूलमुना मात्रमु काक क्रियलमूलमुनु नीतिमंत्रड़नि अंचपुड़नुनि मेरु दीनवलन ग्रहिंचित्रि 25 26 अल् रीड टुगेदर 26 26 मनमंदरंकलसे चादुदाम अट्ट वलने राहाबनु वेश्यकुड़ा दूतलनु चेच्चुकुनि वेयरकु मार्गमुना वारणु वेलपलिकी पंप्ति वेस्नपुड़ क्रियलमूलमुगा नीतिमंतुरालनि अंचपुड़नुन गदा प्राणमुलेने शरीरमेलाग मुर्तमु अलागे क्रियलुलेने विश्वासमुनु मुर्तमु नाव वी अंडरस्टुड द फ्लो व्हाट द जैक जेम्स ट्राइड तू एक्सप्लेन हस फायत विथाउट वर्क इस डेड बिकॉज़ ऑफ द तू पीपल्स फायत व्हिच ही इस एक्सप्लेनिंग हियर इकड़ा क्रियलुलेने विश्वासम मुर्तमु नि याकोपुगारो रास्तो ये उद्देश्यमुतो रासायडु ने दान ने मन अर्थम जस्को कलिनाह सो वैन कैरेक्टर ही रिप्रेसेंस अब्राहम द सकेंड कैरेक्टर ही रिप्रेसेंस राहाब मधुत्ति व्यक्तिने अब्राहमुनु चुकिस्तुनाडु रेंडो अवधिगा राहाबु ने टुंडि व्यक्तिनु चुपिस्तुनाडु सो इन दिस तू पीपल आणि वी आस द जेम्स स्टार्ट्स राइटिंग इस देट इस वैन पर्टिकुलर वर्स व्हिच इस वैरी वैरी अलार्मिंग फॉर अस व्हिच वी रीड इन वर्स 19 पंदमिदवच्चनमु योका वच्चनाल अन्नीटलो कुचम आश्चर्यम कलिंचेट वंटदि सो दिस 26 तू अंडरस्टैंड द इंटेंसिटी ऑफ फायत विथाउट वर्क्स इस डेड द इंटेंसिटी ही ट्राइस तू मेक इट मोर क्लियर बाय राइटिंग दिस 19th वर्स इकड़ा क्रियलुलेने विश्वासम मुर्तमु ने दान गुड़ इन्तो तीव्रंगा बोधिस्तो पंदमिदवच्चनम्लो इन्को विषम तेटग जप्तुनाह सी हो ही कम्पॅर्स इट दान दीर्क एविदंगा पोल्च चूस्तुनाह वर्स 19 इट मेंशन्स यू बिलीव देट देयर इस वैन गॉड यू देव वेल देट इस गुड बट इवन द डीमंट्स बिलीव एंड ट्रेम्बल पंदमिदवच्चनम्लो देवुड़ ओकड़े ने निवु नम्मचुनाह अलागे नम्मुटा मंचदे दयमुलुनु नम्मी वनुकुचुनावि सी हो ही इस कम्पॅरिंग एला पोल्च चूस्तुनाडचुडंदि यू बिलीव देयर इस गॉड निवु देवुड़ ओकड़े नम्मुतुनाह यू बिलीव गॉड इस देयर एंड ही इस द ओन्ली गॉड देवुड़ उन्नाडु आयन मात्रमे देवुड़ निवु नम्मुतुनाह बट इवन द डीमंट्स अलसो बिलीव देट देयर इस गॉड दयमुलु गुड़ा देवुड़ उन्नाय नम्मुतुनाई आणि ही इस कम्पॅरिंग देट ही सेज बट डू यू वांट तू नो हो फूल इस देट फायत विथाउट वर्क इस डेड मर्यो तरवता इन्ता क्रियलुलेने विश्वासम मरी तरवता इन्ता क्रियलुलेनी विश्वासमु निश्फलमैनदि अनी तरवता वेदुडा अन्चप्पी चप्तोन्नाडु.
So being just a believer is not enough.
केवलमु विश्वास विश्वासिगा उड़णामने सरिपोद.
Just believing that God is there is not enough.
देवुड उन्नाडु अनी नम्मुट्टम मात्रम सरिपोद.
How you are exercising that belief into action is what try to represent you who you are.
आयक विश्वासमुनु क्रिया रूपमुगा एविदंगा चुपिस्तुनान अनेदि नेवु एलान्टि व्यक्तिवो चुपिस्तुन्दि.
And it is more alarming that James tried to compare that even the demons believe there is God and tremble.
इन्तो आलोचिंचलकिन विषयमैन इन्तन्ते याकोबु दयमुलतो पोल्च तुन्नाडु दयमुलु गुड विश्वासमुचुतुनाय दयमुलु नम्मुतुनाय अनी देवुड अनी वनुकुतुनाय चप्तुनाडु.
So we have to be very careful to exercise the action of faith in works.
मरी मनायक विश्वासमु अनेदि क्रिया रूपमुगा चुपिंचे विषयमुलो इन्तो जाग्रत वहिंचाले.
And once we accepted Jesus Christ, when we believe in please say, we have to start exercise our faith somewhere or other, everyone will have an opportunity to exercise.
ओक सारी मन विश्वासमु उचिन तरवता मनायक क्रैस्टो जीवितम प्रारमिंचन तरवता मनायक विश्वासमने दि क्रिया रूपमुगा अभ्यासमु चेसे विषयमुलो मनम जाग्रत वहिंचाले.
So exercising faith, there is a role even for a small children to the elder people.
चिन्ना पिल्ललु मोदलकुने पद्दावारी वरकु वार्यक विश्वासमुनु अभ्यासमु चेसे विषयमुलो जाग्रत वहिंचाले.
As you are coming to the church, you can get involved in whatever work is possible which is there in the church.
देवुन मंदिरानिकी चुच्चनपुडो मंदिरमुलो एधे ना पनि उन्नट्लेते अंदलो पालुपंदनम अंचिदि.
It can start from rolling the mats and putting the mats even to the preaching and doing all the ministries. Various ministers are there somewhere or other, the faith that you have to put in work and show it in action.
देवुन मंदिरमुलो चापलु वेसे देगरुण्डि मोदलकुने देवुन वाक्यमु बोधिंचे वरक अनेकरकाले ट्वंटी परिचरलु वाड़बड़ी मनायक विश्वासमु क्रिया रूपमुगा बैटिकी तेलिय चेपड़ाले.
Everyone has a role in bringing the souls, in sharing the gospel to another people. In you know, in order to you, you share your testimony to others and bringing in Christ, the action of faith is important.
मरी इतरुलुनु स्वर्त प्रकटिंचे विषयमुलो वारनी देवुन मंदिरानिकी नडपिंचे विषयमुलो प्रत्योक्करी पात्र उड्डि आयक विश्वासमु क्रिया रूपमुगा बैटिकी रावड़मने दि प्रामक्यम.
So now in the passage that we read in James chapter two.
इकडा याकोबपत्रिका रेंडो अध्यायमो मनम चदिन ट्वंटी वाक्यभागमुलो.
We are going to focus on the second character Rahab.
राहाबु अनेट्वंटी योक स्त्री गुरिंची मनम ध्यानम चेदाम.
And we know that most of them will not have this name.
एन्दुकन ई मनको तेलिसन विषयमैन इन्तन्ते मनलो एवरकी ई पेरू उड़दु.
Is there any sister here named Rahab?
एवरेने इकडा राहाबना पेर बेटुनावलुनारा?
No. In the genealogy of Jesus, there are very important women. Those women, they were life before encountering with God was dejected, rejected by the society and they were so depressed in the state.
ये सुक्रिस्तु प्रभावर वम्शावलीलो कोणदर स्त्रीलु नारो वार्यक जीवितमु इन्तक मुंदुगा चुस्नट्लेते ई समाजमुनुण्डी दूरमुगा समाजमुरुकी हीनमैन इन्तन्ति स्थितलु उड़ण्डि वारो.
So in the whole Bible, we can see twelve videos being written by the Holy Spirit.
योक परिषद ग्रंधमंतद्दिलो पन्नेंडु गुरु विद्वरांडलो देवुन योक परिषद आत्मचेतन तिरिगी समुकुर्चपण्डिवारुनारो.
So few in Old Testament and few in New Testament.
कोणदर पातनी बंदनलो उड़नारो कोणदर कुरतनी बंदनलो उड़नारो.
But in the New Testament, we see in the genealogy of Christ, there are five women mentioned. In that five women, four women were rejected, dejected by the society. They were entirely not even respected in the society.
आइदु गुरु स्त्रीलु नारो ये सुक्रिस्तु प्रभावर वम्शावलीलो अंदलो नालु गुरु मरी समाजमुचेता त्रुणिकरिंचपड़नुवारो समाजमुचेता दुएशिंचपड़नु वारो.
But God has an important role for the woman in the kingdom of God.
आइथे देवुनी राज्यमुलो स्त्रीलकु देवुड ओक प्रामक्यमैन ट्वंटी पात्रा देवुड चुपिंचाड़.
Disciple is the word is not termed for the men, it is for everyone and woman also plays a major role in that.
शिष्यु अंते शिष्युतुम्मने पदमो सहोदरलोक मात्रमैकादु सहोदरीलुकुडा अंदरिकी अंदलो पालु पालु उड्डि.
As I told in the morning, every individual has a purpose in the life.
उदेकालमु चप्पनट्लगा प्रति ओक व्यक्ति जीवितमलो देवुन योक प्रणालिका उड्डि.
No one is born without a purpose.
एवरुकुडा ओक कारणमु लेकुन जिन्मिंचन वर कादु.
Everyone has a unique purpose that God has designed.
देवुड चेस्नट्वंटी प्रणालिकलो प्रत्योक्करीकु ओक कारणमने दु उड्डि.
So in the genealogy of Jesus, as we read in the Matthew Gospel one.
मत्ते स्वर्त ओकटो अध्यायमलो ये सुप्रभावर वम्शावलीलो.
And from the first verse until the Jesus born, there are lot of genealogy lines that has been given.
इकडा मोदटी वच्चनमुनुण्डी अनेकरकाल इन्तो गोपा ओक पद्दा लिस्ट चिट्टा उड्डि इकडा.
In this list, in this list we see that in the genealogy, the first woman that is mentioned in the verse three.
इकडा मोदटी सहोदरी मोदटी स्त्री इकडा एवर पेरू रायबड़िनंडि मोडवा वच्चनमुलो रायबड़िदि.
Who is that? Tamar.
तामारो.
And the second woman that is being represented in the Bible in the genealogy of Christ is mentioned in verse five. The first portion, who is that? Rahab.
रेंडो वस्त्री आइदो वच्चनमुलो मोदटी बागमुलो रायबड़िदि आ स्त्री अरंटे राहाबु.
And the third woman that is mentioned in the genealogy of Christ and in the same verse, verse five, the second portion, who is that woman? Ruth.
मोडवस्त्री ये सुक्रिस्तु प्रभावर वम्शावलीलो मोडवस्त्री आइदो वच्चनमुलो रेंडो बागमुलो रायबड़िदि अम्मै रूथु.
And the fourth woman that is being mentioned is written in the genealogy of Christ, verse six, the last portion which is mentioned as wife of Uriah.
मरी नालु वस्त्री ये सुक्रिस्तु प्रभावर वम्शावलीलो रायबड़िट्वंटि आम आरो वच्चनमुलो ऊरिया भारिया अनी रायबड़िदि.
And the last person, that woman that is mentioned in the genealogy of Christ, the mother of Jesus, Mary.
मरी चिवरी स्त्री ये सुक्रिस्तु प्रभावर योक तल्ली.
In these five names, most of the women will be very happy to have the name Mary.
योक आइदु पेरललो मरिया अनेट्वंटी पेर बेटुकोडा निक इन्तो बंदि संतोषपड़तारो.
But the above four women which is mentioned, it's being dejected by the society, who were so depressed in the society, being rejected with lot of sports and spoils, but still God chosen them and after encounter, their lives were completely different.
आइथे मिगिता नालु गुरु स्त्रीलु योक समाजमुचेता त्रुणिकरिंचपड़नु वारो इन्तो हीनमैन स्थितलो उड़नट्वंटी वारो आइथे एप्पडे ते ये सुप्रभुन एदुरुकुनारो वार जीवितम मार्चपड़िदि.
So as a woman here, a few of women don't think that God is not considering the kind of life that I am going through, the kind of tribulations, the kind of trouble that I am going through, I don't know what I am going to do. Be encouraged that God has a purpose, when there is an encounter in life, your life can be completely changed upside down.
ओक वेला स्त्रीगा अनेकरकाले न परिष्ठितलुकुण्डा वेल्तुन्दि नेनु देवुनी प्रणालिकलो उन्नानोले दो अनेट्वंटी चिन्तलो विचारमुलो निराशलो नेवु नट्लेते ये सुक्रिस्तु प्रभावर ने एदुरुकुनपुडो ने जीवितम मार्चपड़तुन्दि अनका नेवु निराशपड़वल्सन ट्वंटी अवसरमु ले दो.
And these four women's life were very miserable, very pitiful condition when we meditated upon them before the encounter of Christ.
वार ई नालु गुरु स्त्रीलु देवुन वार एदुरुकुनकु मुनुपु वार जीवितम इन्तो दयानिकमुगा उड्डि.
And these four, we don't see that women have this common, maybe Ruth, few of them have. The other names are completely dejected even after the encounter, so much things happen. Even now, we don't see people having the name Tamar or Rahab or the name of the other woman.
मरी ई नालु गुरु पेरललो कोणदमंदि रूथ अनी पेर बेटुकुन्तारो गाने मिगिता मुगुरु पेरललो एवरुकुडा मनम बेटुकोडम चुडमो काने ई नालु गुरु योक जीवितालो तरवता मार्चपड़ाई.
But the Holy Spirit has engraved their names in the genealogy of Jesus, which means God is very concerned and specific for the woman as well.
योक नालु गुरु आइदु गुरु स्त्रीलनु वार पेरलनु ये सुक्रिस्तु प्रभावर आयानक वम्शावलीलो रासिवंचाड़े इन्तकंडे वारकी स्त्रीलकु ओक प्रत्येकमैन ट्वंटी स्थानानिच्छन.
So whatever condition you may go through, whatever troubles you may go through now, whatever situation you may go through in now, in your family, in the society, be encouraged, God has a purpose for you.
नेवु एलान्टि परिष्ठितलुकुण्डा वेल्तुन्ना पटिकी एलान्टि स्त्रमलुकुण्डा एलान्टि शोधनलुकुण्डा वेल्तुन्ना पटिकी देवुड नीक गुरिंची ओक प्रणालिक कलिगुण्डाडु अनी दान बट्टे नेवु प्रचयिंचपड़ाले.
Though the world can give you different tags of names, but be encouraged, God has a purpose for you.
इल प्रपंचमी लोकमु अनेक पेरलु मनकु पेड़तुन्दि गाने देवुनिकी मनायला प्रणालिका ओकटुन्दि.
But here, when we see, we are going to concentrate on the life of Rahab this evening, where it is very mentioned in James chapter two verse twenty five. Likewise, was not Rahab the harlot also justified by works when she received the messengers and sent them out in other way. And so faith without works is dead.
याकोबपत्रिका रेंडो अध्यायमो इरोय आइदो वच्चनमुलो अट्ट वलने राहाबनु वेषकुडा दूतलनु चेच्कुने वेरुकम मार्गमुन वारनी वेलपलिकी पंप्पी वेस्नपुडो क्रियलमुलमुगा नीतिमंत्रालानी अंचपडनुगदा.
And in the Old Testament time, when a woman loses her husband in order to survive, so she used to give a space for the travelers and the different people and also get into this point of a point where they even go for an extent of being a harlot.
पातनी बंदनलो अवक स्त्री तन बर्तचनिपेन तरवता विद्वरालु आयनतरवता तन योक जीवनमु कोनसागिंचकुन्ना दानिकै तन इन्टिनी ओक सत्रमुगा यात्रिकुलकु बसगा उपयोगिंचेट वंटी वारो लेदा वाल इन्ता तीव्रमैन ट्वंटी परिष्ठितलुकु वेल्ले वारंटे वेषकुडा मारिपय ट्वंटी वारो.
And Rahab is a Hebrew word, the meaning of that name is pride.
राहाबने दि अनेट्वंटी पदमो ओक हेब्री पदमो दान योक अर्थमैन इन्तन्त गर्वमो.
And such a woman with this character and goes through a certain things where the genealogy of Jesus itself, this woman is being used, which means something has happened in her life, some encounters happened in life, that's why we are going to meditate today.
अलान्टि स्त्री मरी चिवरीकी ये सुक्रिस्तु प्रभावर योक वम्शावलीलो चेच्चपड़िदि नंटे एदो तन जीवितमलो जरिंदि दान गुरिंचि मनम ध्यानम चेदाम.
So it is clearly mentioned that she received the messenger and sent them in other way, what is that story behind this particular verse?
इकडा रायबड़िट्वंटी माटा तेटगर रायबड़िदि इन्तन्ते आम दूतलनु चेच्कुने वेरुकम मार्गमुन वारनी वेलपलिकी पंप्पी वेस्नु दिन अर्थमैमिटि?
In order to understand, most of you know this, for those who doesn't know, let's get a clear understanding, let's turn to Joshua book, chapter two.
अनेक चाला मंदिक तेलिसे उड़द इथे तेलिनु वारकी मरक्सारे चुद्दाम योशुवा पत्रिका योशुवा ग्रंधमु.
Joshua, chapter two.
रेंडो अध्यायम योशुवा ग्रंधम रेंडो अध्यायम.
So save time, let's read alternately from verse one to eighteen.
मोदटी नुण्डी पद्देन मिदवच्चनालु मनम मार्ची मार्च चादुदाम योशुवा ग्रंधमु रेंडो अध्यायम मोदटी नुण्डी पद्देन मिदवच्चनालु. नूनु कुमारडाने योशुवा वेगुलो वारने इदरु मनशुलोनु पिलिपिंची मेरु पोई आदेशमुनु मुख्यमुगा एरुकुन चुडाने वार्तु चप्पी सित्तिमुनु नोदनुण्डी वारनी राहसमुगा पंप्पिनो वार वेल्ले राहाबनुनु ओक वेषिंडचेरी अकड़ दिगगा. अदडो नियोद्दकु वच्ची नींटचेरिना आ मनशुलोनु वेलपलिकी तिस्कुने तिस्कुने रम्मो वारो ई देशमंत्रणी वेगु चुस्टे के वच्चिरनी चप्पुटकु राहाबनु नोद्दकु मनशुलोनु पंप्पगा. आइदो वच्चनम् वार एकडुन्डी वच्चिरो नेने एरुगनो चीकड़ी पड़चुनगा गविनी वेबड़ो वेलनो आ मनशुलो वेलपलिकी वेलरी वार एकड़ीकी पेरो नेने एरुगनो मेरु वारनी सीक्रमुगा तरमितरा पटुकुन्दरो. एड़ा वच्चनम् आ मनशुलो योरदानो दाटु रेवलम मार्गमुन वारनी तरमिरी तरमपयन मनशुलो बायलु वेल्लन तोडने गविनी वेबड़नो. यहो आ इदेशमुनु मीक इच्चचुन्नाडनीयो मी वेलनम माकु बयमु पुट्टुन्ननीयो मी बयम वेलना इदेश निवासलंदरकी दैर्यमु चेडुननीयो नेने एरुगुदनो. पदकुण्डा वच्चनम् मेमु विनिनपुडो मा गुंडलु करिपयनो मी देवुडे नेहो आपयना आकाशमंदुनो पयना आकाशमंदुनु क्रिंदा बूमीयंदुनो देवुडे मी एदुता एट्टी मनशुलकायननु दैर्यमे मात्रम उड़दु. ना धन्रयो ना तल्लियो ना अन्नदमुलुनु ना आक्कचल्लेंडुनो वारकी कलिगुन्ना वारंदर्नो चावकुण्डा ब्रथकनिच्चे रक्षिंचुन्नाट्लगा दय चेसी यहो आतोडने प्रमाणम चेव्डने नो. We have heard about it, we have heard about it, we have heard about it. He has washed his hands, he has washed his hands, he has washed his hands. He has washed his hands, he has washed his hands, he has washed his hands. He has washed his hands, he has washed his hands, he has washed his hands. He has washed his hands, he has washed his hands, he has washed his hands. He has washed his hands, he has washed his hands, he has washed his hands.
So the whole point of this, what we have seen as, under the leadership of Joshua, Joshua is sending two spies to see what is the condition in Jericho.
We have heard about it, we have heard about it, we have heard about it.
It is very clear in the second verse, it is written as men, manushlu.
We have heard about it, we have heard about it, we have heard about it.
And even in the seventh verse, it is mentioned as men, 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 you keep repeatedly seeing two men has been ten, two men has been sent.
We have heard about it, we have heard about it, we have heard about it.
So these two men goes there as a spy and try to see the condition what is happening.
These two men, these two men.
And when the king of Jericho got an information that the Israelites have penetrated into the land of Jericho, the two spies have come to see, he got agitated.
When he was in Jerusalem, he was attacked, he was attacked, he was attacked.
So he is giving the message to the soldiers that go and see and identify the two people, if you find them, kill them and, and make sure you give that good message again to me.
When he was in Jerusalem, he was attacked, he was attacked, he was attacked.
So understand the seriousness of this passage.
This is a very important story.
So we see the war happening in this world.
We are watching this.
Imagine between a war between a two nation, when two person who comes to the other nation to check out what is there and giving the spy, that particular nation, prime minister or the leader, how he will react when he identifies the two people.
There was a war between two countries, when there was a war, he was told that he would kill him, he was told that he would kill him.
In current situation, you understand if someone from, you know, from, from the Ukraine tries to penetrate to the other country, when the chief minister of that particular nation identify them, how he will do, how he will respond to the two people, he will really kill them like anything.
Ukraine, Russia, there was a war between Russia and Ukraine, they went to Russia to watch the war, they went to Russia to watch the war. They were told that they would kill him, they were told that they would kill him.
So there is no difference of the intensity of that pressure that two people might have had at that moment.
When they were in the war, they were very brave, they were very brave.
So during that moment, Rahab, what she did, she tried to hide them into her house.
When she was in the war, she tried to hide them into her house.
And here we see that to hide them into the house, it's not an easy task.
She tried to hide them into her house.
So when a Russian citizen tries to give a place for Ukraine people, what will happen right now?
When they were in the war, they were in the war, they were in the war.
The person who came for spies will have, maybe will have less punishment, but the one who saved them will have more punishment.
When they were in the war, they were taught enough. When they were in the war, they were taught enough.
But here, the Rahab take that courageous decision to give home for them.
When they were in the war, they were taught enough.
And to get that information and give, to take the bold courageous decision, what is the important aspect behind her that?
When they were in the war, they were taught enough.
That we read in the passage itself.
We have heard about it.
Because she heard who the God of Israel was.
Because she heard who the God of Israel was.
And what the God of Israel have done to the Israel people.
She heard who the God of Israel was.
Which is basically, she knows the information of God of Israel.
When we talk about it, we know about it.
That is what we see in the morning, knowing about Jesus and knowing Jesus.
When we talk about it, we know about it.
But here, the Rahab know about God.
When he heard about God, he knew about God.
And knowing about God, there is going to be a transition of knowing God.
When he heard about God, he knew about God.
The personal relationships going to established.
When he heard about God, he knew about God.
And that's what we are going to read further.
When he heard about God, he knew about God. When he heard about God, he knew about God.
That is why it is written in the chapter, verse ten, we see that, for we have heard how the Lord dried up the water of the Red Sea for you, when you came out of Egypt, and what you did to the two kings of Amorites, who were on the other side of the Jordan, Sittom and Ob, whom you utterly destroyed, I have heard that message, Rahab says to them.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could, he would do whatever he could. He would do whatever he could, he would do whatever he could. He would do whatever he could, he would do whatever he could. He was told that he would do whatever he could.
So she is getting the information, she says, I have heard all about your God, what he has done to you and how he has done to your enemies.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Those miraculous things I have heard.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Those informations I have heard.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
How amazingly God has take you through the Red Sea, I have heard.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And how your God is so powerful, I have heard.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
How he can even kill the kings of greater kings who is against you, I have heard.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So she heard the information.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
The information gets into the head.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
The reason why I am emphasizing this information head, you will understand as we go through.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
First, what happened, all that information she has, she has heard and it went into her head.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And now let's read verse eleven.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
As she got that information in the head, she says, she says, as soon as we heard these things, our heart melted. Neither did there remain any more courage in anyone because of you, for the Lord, your God, he is the God in heaven above and on earth beneath.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So first, winindi.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So that winatum is trying to next, what is happening, as soon as we heard, our hearts melted.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So the information that she got in head, now it is melting the heart.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And she knows the Lord, your Lord is the only God, he is the heaven on the earth, he is the one who is the creator and all sovereign God is what she is declaring.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And there is no one is courageous enough to stand against that.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And our hearts melted.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
See Exodus chapter fifteen, verse fourteen.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
The hearing, what they heard.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So there is always when the information about the God, as it is happened earlier, they were trembled.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And see in Joshua chapter five, verse one.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
The heart melted.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Joshua, chapter five, verse one.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So we see that the other kings who also heard about this, their heart is also melted.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
What is the difference between the others who just heard the information and only the heart melted, but the difference between the Rahab, who took an other step also when compared to others?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Rahab exercised her faith after hearing, after the heart is melted, she is trying to exercise the faith.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Do you understand? In Christian life, remember three H, letter H.
In Christ's life, there are three Hs.
Three Hs is very, very important in real Christian life.
In Christ's life, there are three Hs.
The first H is head.
The first H is head.
The second H stands for heart.
The second H stands for heart.
Third H stands for hand.
The third H stands for hand.
There is a beautiful, why, why I am trying to give all this so that you can understand and remember anytime?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And there is very powerful spiritual secrets behind this small, small analogy.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So the first H is for head, second heart, third is hand.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
See, it is very evidently, clearly said that Rahab got the information as he, as she heard, she got the information in head.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And in the eleventh verse, we see as soon as she was heard this thing, her heart melted, so there is a change in the heart.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So the information has brought that transformation in our heart.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So the information is very important, but that information has to bringing the transformation in your heart.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
As we come to every Sunday and many meetings, we keep hearing the gospel, if you just have it alone as an information, if it does not bring a transformation, there is no use.
When we talk about it, we talk about it, we talk about it.
So the information that you hear has to bring a transformation in your heart.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Because the heart is the more deceitful thing that we have, that list of sin that comes out of heart.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So the information about the God has to bringing the transformation in the heart.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Because the information even Satan also has, that's what we read it, right?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
It, he, James tried to explain to us in chapter two, verse nineteen, very clearly, even the devil, even the demons believe and they tremble by knowing God.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
But the information has to bringing the transformation in the heart is very important.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And the next level to that is, the information after being the transformation, the transformation has to bring in action.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
That is where the faith lies.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
If I say I believe, I got the information, if I say my heart is transformed, but if I don't show it in action, the faith is dead.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Here, the Rahab, when the information comes into our head, there is a transformation in the heart, she tries to exercise it in action.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
That is the reason why as she exercised that action in hand, as she exercised her faith, her name itself comes in the genealogy of Jesus, that's a great privilege that she got.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And see as we read, continue to read, we know that Rahabs are trying to talk to them and explain that, taking a very courageous step to hide them, imagine if the soldiers tried to find out it is inside the room, she would have gotten to a great mess.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
We see very three important qualities in the Rahab after she heard and the transformation came into the heart.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
The first character is courage.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
The second character is wisdom.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And third character is faith.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So she took a courageous step to hide them amidst of whatever trouble she can, it comes later, she is very courageous to hide them.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And with so much of wisdom, she is trying to hide them in a covered place where no one can find them.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
It is also with so much of wisdom, she tries to have that scarlet red rope so that she can make them escape and giving them the information, be here for a while, in that mountain for a while, after it is all settled, then you can go to your nation.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So we see a courageous step Rahab took.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
We can see the wisdom that Rahab had in hiding the people and having the scarlet and putting it.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And in the third thing, the faith is, she has a covenant with them telling that, I beg you man, that when you come here, you have to save my family and for that, what is she is telling, there is an indication that the red rope has to be tied in the window and has to be dropped down, with that indication she can be saved.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And see in verse twenty-one, we see that faith is being exercised.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Then she said, according to your words sir, so it be, and she sent them away and they departed and she bound the scarlet red cord in the window.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
This red scarlet represents Jesus.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And because of the red scarlet, the whole family is going to get saved.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And though those two messengers were coming and going, she had the covenant, she had the faith, definitely her family will be rescued and the reason, that's the reason why the red scarlet rope was tied and then hanged down.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And after that, we see, after they come into the Jericho, the whole family of the Rahab is saved because of the red scarlet that is being mentioned and down in the window and the whole family was saved without destruction.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So that red scarlet represents the Jesus where the Jesus as they believe, as she believed, had the faith so that the entire family was rescued from the death.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So how is your faith right now exercised?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Do you have only God as the information?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Do you have God only as an information, keep reading the Bible alone?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Thus, that information has brought a transformation in your heart?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Do you have a personal relationship with Jesus?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Do you have the talking, walking relationship with God?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Is God talking to you, are you sensitive to the spirit of God hearing his voice?
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
God's word is very clear, my sheep shall hear my voice.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
God may talk in different ways, but definitely God will speak if you are sensitive to his voice.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
As the sensitivity of hearing the God gets higher and higher, you will be very clear from where the voice is coming from.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
The first time I heard the voice of God being sensitive is when my mom passed away when I was seventeen years old.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And in the seventh, when I was seventeen years old and I was just baptized and I, I got saved and my mom was admitted in the hospital, it was heart attack, in the morning she was admitted, in the night she passed away.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So I have a very good relationship with God at that time, I was very actively participating in the church, I used to very, I, I was seeking God and that is the reason why at the age of seventeen I got baptized.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
And immediately, the death of my mom was completely scattered, my present situation.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So by the time, I think it will be probably November twenty-nine, two thousand, uh, one, one or two, I guess. So during that time, the night almost by twelve o'clock, the mom's body was taken inside the ambulance and it was taken away and we have to follow at the backside.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
It was two thousand three.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So during that time and my, my brother-in-law is a doctor, my, my wife's husband is a doctor.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
No, my husband. No, my sister, my sister's husband, husband is a doctor.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
It's a big testimony, let's not deviate, the point is, is, and I was, after hearing the shock of my mom's death, I was reacting awkwardly, I was doing different things, I, I, I don't know how to react.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
By seeing how I am reacting, my dad told to my mama, that is my sister's husband, since he is a doctor, you bring him alone at the backside because if I, if I take him inside the ambulance near by the body of mom, he might do something to his mom, you know, being falling on her and do all that.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could. When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So ambulance was going, my mama was driving the bike, I was sitting at the backs of my mama and I was traveling.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So when I was traveling, I really remember in by, almost by twelve o'clock in the night, there was lot of thoughts in my mind that I will go home and do suicide.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
Because I cannot live without her because she was very close to me.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
So actually, our family is a Hindu family where my father is a Hindu, but my mom is a Christian from the birth.
When he heard about it, he was told that he would do whatever he could.
The reason behind my mom has more care on me is because... The reason behind my mom has more care on me is because after I was born, the entire family got saved and you know, came into God and that's the reason she was very, she saw me very preciously and she was very close to me.
Ma taligaro nanentho priemuga chusaitu venti varu endukantaka neen jenmichinatharavatanne ma kutumamanta raksana pondindi. Andukke entho priemuga nanchusavara.
So my, my brother was there, my elder sister was there and my brother is almost seventeen years older than me.
Na sahodarudunadu aynapadhihedanlu naakantaka pettavadu naika sahodari, petta sahodari kada undi.
So during those days, what will happen is basically they will have three children.
Mari aasamayamlo maamulake ete muguru pillalu evirkana untar.
So they had two children and almost for thirteen to fourteen years. First is my brother and second is my sister and after thirteen years, there was no children. So they were trying going to different hospitals approaching to take some treatment to get a child.
Ma talidandulaku okumaduputtadu taravata okumarthiputtindi taravata padhumudu samachrala pillalu ledu. Taravata inkoka santanam kaavalani entho mandi doctorlunu sampradicharavu.
So during that time, she, my mom used to have a very, very painful abdomen pain.
Aasamayamlo ma talikke entho kadupunapi entho ekku kadupunapi chedde.
So my dad took her to different hospitals in Chennai, very top specialty hospital but nothing worked out.
Ma thanrigaro Chennai lo entho petta petta hospitals tisukunavillaragani akkadi eyedu kuda jargaledu.
And that time, she told him, you accept Jesus, God will do a miracle in our life.
Aate aasamayamlo taligaro ma thanrigaro tonnaru Yesu Pravav namukavayana adbutal chesadu.
But with so much of frustration because he had tried different hospitals and no, right, nothing happened. So with frustration said, apudizari tenen upukuntanle, ani okav, he just gave that statement.
Mari eyedo aynakunnatu venti mari enno hospitalu tirigaraganka ayaka bava drakamto unnadu, adi jarugateneen upukuntanu ananadu.
And my mom hold that statement and she started praying.
Ayaka maatano patikoni ma taliparam prarthana chedam praram.
I still remember my used to, my mom used to fast and pray every Friday.
Nakuchala bhaag gurthundu, prati shukravaram ma taligaro upavasmaniparadhanachesavara.
So as the time goes, as the time goes, naturally it was conceived.
Taravata kalamu gadichekothu sadhana magane neenno jenmichitavachanu.
Now, my father halfway, he was shaken.
Ippudu thanrigaro yakasthite kadilipoyindi.
Ekadupoyina jargaledu, yatida ipudu conceive vendente, it is something beyond, it is not natural.
Enni hospitalu tirina aim jargaledu aitha ipudu jarigindi ante eyedo devanikeshakti undiananukunadu.
And now the second part.
Taravata rendu bagam.
What a second part, she had a very abdomen, very severe abdomen pain.
Amakuna taligaro ke entho kadupunapi teevrangavundedi.
And by October seven nineteen eighty-seven, when I was born, that pain also completely gone.
Panthamunla enuva yedosamachan October edotara ikuna neen jenmichinapada kadupunapi kuda purthiga poyindi.
And now my dad was very clear, it is not because of human things or very doctor things, it is something very divine.
Ippudu ma thanrigaro ke purthiga namakamachindu eyedo vaidulyesindu kadu devudu matramme chaygaladu.
And before itself, my grandmother, that is my father's mom, accepted Christ.
Mari thanriyaka talik kuda aasamayani mundhey Yesu Pravav nangikirichundu.
And slowly, they came to Christ.
Varu nidananga Yesu Pravavunadakachadu.
So now you would have understood the reason why mom is more loving to me because after I was born, there is a complete change in the home.
Endukantaka neenputina taravata ma intlo gopam marpannedi ravadamo ma taligaro chusina entho gana priemicharavu.
So that is how the very intimate relationship I had with my mom that I was thinking without her I cannot live or survive.
Anta ma taligaro anta sannithamendu venti sammanam kaligunna endukantaka amelakunda neen undalena anedu venti alochina nakundedi.
So when all that thoughts were coming and I was driving and I mean, when I was sitting at the back and I was going see the ambulance, in the night I heard that voice.
Neenno ma mama driving chesa bike venakala kuuchanene mundu ambulance veltuvundanaga neenno okavasvaranavintavachadu.
That is the first time I heard that sensitive.
Ayaka alanti swaram vinadam motomadrisari.
It was the Tamil song that it, it says, thiingukanaadhirupai thiingukanaadhirupai taithan pillae marandhalan naanunma eippadile, kannaime kaappadu pole, unnaide nam kaathidwen. The meaning for this is, you will not hear any more evil in your life.
Ayaka partaku arthamaimintante okapata vinabadinda, a partakarthamaimintante, inkha nee jivithamlo eya dustutum gurinchini vinnavo.
Like the mother cares for the son, I will care for you.
Okav tali tanakumarani patla jagratavahinchinatlagan neenunipatla jagratavahista.
How the eyelids protect the eyes, I will protect you.
Kanti kannuno akanti papa eyavidanga kaapadutundu neenneeyavidanga kaapadatanu.
And I keep hearing that, that song, it's, I keep hearing it and I see there was no one.
Neenno a maatana kuvinabadutunnae neen pakakuchusteyavu lero.
As I was traveling, 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 again from the left side, the same voice.
Neen veltu veltu veltuvunaga vedamai pannundugada adeswaramu.
And again, I keep moving, moving, moving both the sides, I keep hearing the same voice.
Inkha mundukaveltuvundaga rendu vaiplundu ede maatal vinabadutunnae.
That was the moment I decided I should not go for suicide and I understood it is something divine.
Mari aasamayamlo neenno neenno nirnayanjescundan entante neenno atmahatekku velakudada nirnayam tisko kududu. Endukantaka devude iyaka paristhitanamatinchinadu.
So that was the first encounter of hearing the voice. So as we develop spiritually, we have to become sensitive. God will talk to us through the Bible, in the church and lot of different ways, but be sensitive to hear the voice of God.
Neen motomadrisari ayaka devanisvaramu vinatvante sandarumam ide. Aitha manam edigayakothu edigayakoladi, devanikeshvaramu vinayvishemlo manam mrudduga chavadale.
The relationship with God is very, very important.
Devanito sammanam chala chala pramukkamayenadi.
So how is your relationship today with God?
Niyaka devanito niyaka sammanam eyavidanga undi iruzu.
Is that the information of Jesus is just an information in your life or it has brought a transformation in your heart?
Yesu Kristu Pravava gurinchinadu venti vishyalani kevalamunilo okasangathim laga matramme unda leda nee jivitanne marchievesinda.
Thus, the transformation that you got in your heart has is being exercised every day physically in works.
Nee hrudemlo chinadu venti amarpu prati dinamo kriyaarupakamga kriyalu kanabadutunda.
Only the Jesus Christ can bring that transformation in your life.
Kevalam Yesu Kristu Pravava matramme alanti marpu nee hrudem jivitanu tiskoladu.
Rahab who has a tag of being called as a Hebrew word pride is now being called as a person who is courageous, now is being called as a person who has wisdom, now it is called as a person who has faith.
Hebri bhaashalo rahabu garvamu ani arthamichetu venti pilovadu venti rahabu ipudu devuni aagnanu daiyamuga, daiyamuga amakriya kriyaarupakam chupinchetu venti vektiga prathilevadutundu.
So this is, this transformation only Jesus can bring in your life.
Ilaanti marpu kevalam Yesu Kristu Pravava matramme nee jivitanu tiskunragaladu.
So how is your relationship with God?
Devanito nee sahavam sammanam eyavidanga undi.
Is your relationship, walking, talking relationship with God is intact?
Devanito niu nadichetu venti niu maatlaadutu nadichetu venti sammanam sarienadu gavunda.
Is the guidance of Holy Spirit, are you sensitive to the Holy Spirit?
Prashuddha atmakunni aynakstalamistunam mrudduga vunnavaya napatla.
And it is very clearly mentioned that you are clean by hearing these words, you are clean, that's what is mentioned in John chapter fifteen.
Yohanapathri, yohanasvartai do, padayadu adhamlo i maatalu vinadam dharaman prashuddha parshabadham.
So your sanctification process keeps on happening as you get closer and closer and closer to God.
Devaniki sammeepamga sammeepamga ochekothu eyaka prashuddha parshabadutaanidi, manjivitanu jarugutundundi.
That is what in Revelation we see, those who are doing sin, let them do, that is okay, but those who are holy, let them get holier and holier and holier.
Andukke prakaranidham chivari adhamlo manusavutam dustudu inkha dustudugane undanemo. Aitha prashuddudu inkha prashuddugaga inkha prashuddugaga marshabadutundaladu.
And now you got the information about God, hearing about the information and I believe as you have all come here, the transformation would have also happened in your life.
Mari manam ikadu kochnai, ochidha aynakurinchivinnataravata manhurdemlo marpu kuda kachitanga vasunna neen namutunanu.
But now the question that God is keeping in front of us is that is the transformation have you started showing in action through your hand?
Ippudu Yesu Pravu devudu manaku vesetundu okav presnetante, ayaka marpu manaka kriyaarupamga baitigavastundala leda.
Information in head has to bring the transformation in heart, but these two ultimately have to bring in the action in hand.
Manam telliskunadu venti avishyalu mana hrudani marchievayali aitha chivari ga manaka marpu kriyalu kanapadale.
That is why Jacob mentions, James mentions that faith without action is dead.
Andukke yaakobantunadu kriyalu leni viswashamu murtamo.
And now read James chapter two verse twenty-five.
Ippudu yaakobatriga rendu adham iruvayedu vachinam.
Likewise was not Rahab the harlot also justified by works when she received the messengers and sent them out another way.
Yaakobatriga rendu iruvayedu, atuvalane Rahabano vesha kuda duhtalan chetchkuni, verokamarkamno varne velupalike pampi veshinappudu, kriyalamoolamga neatmantralani ensapadana kadha.
In Telugu, it is very clearly mentioned that the two people is being mentioned here does what?
Ikad idharu vektulu eymani raibadindi Telugu lo, a vidharu vektulu evaru?
Duthalu.
Duthalu.
But in Joshua two, we see that it is only men, 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 men.
Aka yoshvagranam rendu adhamlo akada manusalu manusalu anrabadu.
But here in the James, as the kingdom work being done during that time and now after knowing the kingdom work what has happened, now the James is engraving. The Holy Spirit has engraved the word that they have been an angels, which means Rahab have served the angels.
Aitha appudu rajamika stopinsapadlele, rajamasa stopinsapadinta taravata yaakobipraastuvunadu, varu duhtalu, varu manusalu rupamlo, varu duhtalu anirabadutaraibadutundu.
So the action of the Rahab physically has been changed into a divine action in the kingdom of God.
Amachesinadu venti amakriyaarupamga chesinadu venti a kriya, atmiamga devanirajamlo parashuddhamendu venti diga marshabadindi.
So the normal human being Rahab is now is considered as a person who has served the angels, who has saved the messenger and now looking toward divine being.
Ama.
So now, a normal human being as whatever action the Rahab did during that time, now it is considered as a divine being, whatever she has served to them.
Mari epredite ame brathikunna samayamlo kevalamo okam manusalu sadhana manam manusalaka amechesinadu la kriya, ipuddaite a kriyanu duhtalaku chesnatlagu kanabadutundu.
So whatever work you have in the church, in the ministry, in, in house of God, whatever work you do, it is being counted.
Mari eyapanena devanimandramalochesetu venti pani parichare eyedena kuda, adi devanidristiki ensapadutundu.
Right now you might feel that you are serving people or this, I put the map, people are coming and sitting, you might look in that perspective, but there is a kingdom work being enabled.
Mari ee samayamlo manusalaku pani chesnatlagu manusalaku parichare chesnatlagu undundemugane, devanirajamlo adi devanikorukana tundipani.
But that Rahab while she was exercising, she might not have the understanding of James like how he has mentioned them as a duhtalu.
Rahabu tanu ayaka karyamo ayaka manusalaka chesnapudu, devanirajamlo adi duhtalaku chesnatlagu ensapadutundani vishyalamak teliedu.
So right now, whatever work you are doing in the God's house will be considered as a divine being works and will be rewarded in the kingdom.
Aitha ee samayamlo devanimandramlo niu eyapani chesinappadiki, adi devanidristilo ensapadi, adi sarienadu venti manchi kriyaaga ensapadutundu.
What may be the action you are doing?
Ey kriya ey pani chesinappadiki.
But doing nothing is not an option.
Aitha eyamichayakunda undedi anedi a, a, adi undakududu.
I'll repeat, doing nothing is not at all an option.
Eyamichayakunda undadamo anedi manam jivitanu undakududu.
Somewhere or other you have to do.
Eyedo okatima namchayale.
It may be in the house of God, it may be in your surrounding areas, you are maybe sharing the love of Christ, somewhere or other you pray, God will guide you.
Devanimandramalona enasare leda inti porugavare kenasare devanipriemunitharulak teli chedam eyedu vishyalu.
So the head knowledge has to bring the transformation in heart?
Manaka alochinalo manak telliskunadu venti sangathulama hrudemlo marpuntisukunravali.
The head knowledge of God that we hear has to bring the transformation in the heart?
Devanikaka sangathulama telliskunadu venti avishyalu manhurdemlo marpuntisukunravali.
And the transformation should not stop with the heart alone.
Ayaka marpu manhurdemtona aegipogudu.
The transformation in the heart has to bring in an action in the hand.
Manaka marpu mana chethidvara kriyaluka baitigiravali.
If you are not doing that action, it is mentioned in the Bible, not me, he is trying to correlate with the devil.
A kriyalu mana jivithamlo lekupote manamo daiyamlo to polsabaditu divaram.
In the sense, James clearly says, even demons also believe and tremble.
Andukke yaakobantunadu daiyamlo kuda vini nammy vanukuchunnavi.
What is the difference that we have?
Mari manakunatvante vedyasmenti?
We believe.
Manam namyamu.
We got saved.
Manam raksampondampondamu.
We got the transformation.
Manam marpu chendamu.
But don't stop that, you have to show it in the action.
Aitha akkada tonne aegipogudu gani kriyalu adi kanapadale.
So faith without action is dead.
Aitha kabatti kriyalu leni viswashamu murtamo.
So let us examine ourselves and ask God, Lord, whatever work that you have for us, the purpose you have for us, talk to me so that I will show it in the action.
Mari manamo manalama parixinchundam devanito chepdam pravva, eyedena padiki naato teli chendi, na kriyalu neenno chupistano.
May the information and the transformation, let the Lord lead us into the action.
Ayaka avishyalu telliskunutadaanulunchi manam marpu pandi, ayaka kriyalu manam manaladdevudu nadipinsunuka ka. Mogarin chendu day chesi. Okani vishyamu vinnatvanti vakyaamuno gurthu chesukundu. Kalumuskoni devanikaka simhasanu vedada mocharili, mana jivithamo eyavidanga undalayedo parixinchukuni, sari chesukundam. Kriyalu kaligunadu venti viswashamu mana jivithamlo undalayedo. Rahabu vali vinnatrai sangathalu vinnatvanti sangathalu mana jivitanne hrudani marchievesinalaylada. Okavela inkha manhurdem marshabadakupote. Neede anukulamendu venti samayamu, ede raksana dinamo, devanimatale vini mana hrudemlo, marpu korakai prarthan chedam. Marshabadina hrudemka kaligunatlate, akkada tonne aegipoto unnamu, leda marpu kriyalu mana kanabadutunda, anedu venti dani parixinchukundam. Avishwashamu mana vinnatvanti di, a maatalu mana hrudemlo marpu no, a marpu kriyalu no baitikkanabadutunda, anedu venti parixinchukundam. Devaniduta mana jivitalano edaartamuga upukoni sari chesukundam. Premgalama parlo gubthanri, jamgalakupadewa, athinatamayana simhasanampayanaasridhavana dewa. Samipimparani tejasulamratumlo, niu matramme vasistu, niththemu aaradinsabadu chupujinsabaduchinadewa. Eera samudramuno paile chesinadu venti dewa, Israelano adbutamuga, era samudramaloni yerdano nadilonundi, aarina nealanu nadipinchinadu venti dewa. Amoriyala rajununo, sihonu rajunu ogu rajunu, naasnamu chesi, Israel leduta eurun niluvadalekunda varne ganaparchinadu venti dewa ni padhulakondanam. Idasundvara, ma idhik tisukunchundu, ni maatila nettimpati vandanamalu. Kriyalu leni viswashamu murtamayenadi ani maako naapkam chesuto vachinandukani kvananamalu. Rahabo, ivishyalani vini, tanahhurdemlo marpu pondindi, a marpu no aidharu vegulavaru manusalaku, eduta a kriyaarupakamga dani chupinchindi. Tanu daiyam kaligunadu venti strega, okapudu garvamani tundipero pettabadi, taravata tanu daiyam kaligunadu venti strega. Nanamto vivekamuto nadichkunadu venti strega, viswashamu kaligunadu venti strega tanano miru marchievesinandukai, neekentavandanamalu. Thadvara, Yesu Kristu Pravava vamshaavali lo chetchabendu venti, peru chetchabendu strega miru, airparchukundukai, neekvandanamalu chelistunam. Kriyalu leni viswashamu murtamayenadi murtamayenadi ani teli chedanake, tanaka jivitanu no maako udaharnaga, miru chupinchandukani neekentavandanamalu. Neenmeme kuda, eyavite vintuvunamo, eyavite telliskuntuvunamo, vaatidhvara ma hrudemlo marchievayabadunatliga, ma gundalo karipovunatliga, sahayam chemaniprathistunam. Marshabadina hrudemlo galavaramai, kriyalu ayaka marpu no memu chupinchavaram gunutak sahayam chendi. Neeswaramu vinatvanti mrudduvayatvanti chavulano manusunu maako dai chemaniprathistunam. Niu chepino margamlo nadichkunatliga, neeswaramu ellapudu vinagalunatliga ma sahayam chemaniprathistunam. Kriyalu avika viswashamuno chupinchagalutaku, nee mandramalo paricharelo chesavishemlo gani, ithralakuni priemuno chupinchavishemlo gani, ithralakuni gurinchiteli chesa vishemlo gani, me unnatvanti stalamalo, neusinchapranthamalo, panchachunadu venti stalamalo. Me makkadu unnapadiki.